Okay, fabulous. Now I can thank WinCam for bringing us to our millions and millions of fans. If you do not want to be recorded, please make sure your camera is off. And um your microphone if you don't want to be heard. Thank you Cheryl Dennis, our recording secretary for being here tonight. Thanks Taylor for being here, our town planner. And we can open with a um roll call vote. So uh Brian Vernalia.
Present.
Nick Rosetos.
Present.
Don Cortezas.
Present.
And I Carrie Layton am present as well. Uh so we have Quorum although we're missing uh Diab Garius. So for updates, I do think we have a couple of things before it slips away from me. I want to make the the announcement that we have our select board liaison uh sort of um. They voted and and properly uh designated Bill McGonigal to be the liaison between the planning board and the select board, and he is here with us this evening. So um if you want to say hi, Bill, go ahead. You can take the top of the order here. Sorry, Taylor, I should have given you a heads up about that.
Go ahead, Bill. I I I I made you co-host now. Or I guess we still can't hear you, so you got to unmute.
Ah, there we go. Um great. Thank you, Taylor, for the tech help and all the members of the planning board. Um yes, as of last night, I'm now officially the select board liaison uh with your board, and I'm excited to be working with you guys. Uh I've had the pleasure of talking to some of you before, um but I think John and um. Uh well, John, I think you might be the only one I haven't had a chance to really meet. Um but you guys do really important work. Uh I saw a lot of it when I was on the zoning board and various cases came from you to us. And now in the select board, it's just a a little bit different. Um but I followed what's been going on with the North Main Street rezoning. Uh I was very impressed with all the effort you guys put into the MBTA three A uh initiative and especially your outreach and education. Um I want to follow that example as much as possible, and I'll be sitting in whenever I can on your meetings just to be part of it live. And if I can't, uh like tonight, I have to leave at seven thirty. Um I'll certainly be catching up on the recorded sessions. So uh thank you all very much, and please do not ever hesitate to reach out to talk to me directly. Um I think that is a big initiative for all of the select board members right now, just to increase communication um in all forms. So uh let's keep the discussion going and and working towards everything we can to make our town better.
Great. Great. Excited. I think I think the um the spirit of collaboration is really strong among boards right now, and I'm thrilled to see it. It's super important for projects like North Main. So very excited to work with you. Thanks for popping in.
Yep, I'm gonna turn my camera off and just listen to what you guys are doing for the next half hour or so.
Great, awesome. Uh one sort of tangential, not tangential, like related update. I was able to meet with Michelle Pryor as well, the chair of the select board um in a conversation about North Main. Again, just making sure our boards are working closely together and um making sure she knew some of the priorities for the for the project. And most importantly, the select board has so much to do with the with the streets and with planning, the parts that you know, sort of connect the the sides of North Main. So um I got on her radar the idea that we want to make sure that we're working on complete streets. So creating um you know, pedestrian-friendly sidewalks and bike-friendly streets and room for trees to be planted and all of those things. She had some interesting ideas about parking that we'll kind of work in if we can. Um and all of that's going well. Um we realized along the way that we we are once again eligible for funding uh from a complete streets initiative from the state of Massachusetts. So in two thousand seventeen, we had gotten, I think, four hundred thousand dollars from a complete streets grant from the state, and that was used for a number of projects. We this we're kind of just getting caught up with this, but our town engineer is trained um in the the planning tool that is called complete streets, so sort of understanding. You know, how to use bump outs, how to use speed bumps, how to sort of make sure that we're creating pedestrian-friendly ways and was part of the use of the funds in the past. So he has already put in um a request for a prioritization plan, which is the first step of reapplying for funding. So we're now eligible. The program's gotten more competitive, but we could be eligible for up to five hundred thousand dollars. So um that will have to be approved by capital, the the funds to write the prioritization plan. And um as that process unfolds, we'll we'll um we'll be, you know, keeping it on our radar, working together to make sure we get um funding wherever we can for some of this stuff. Um I think we also, Taylor, you must you want to probably want to share updates on the assistant town planner who will be really helpful for getting all this stuff done.
Uh yeah, so we had um we we have an interview tomorrow, um potentially last last interview. Uh that will be that will be great. And then um we'll meet between uh Beth Carey and I to make a final a final decision. Our one of the one of one of our top candidates uh did uh did drop out of the race. Uh took another job at at another uh at another town um which is which is unfortunate, but fortunately, we do have uh two other very good candidates. So um we uh that's that that's still going well.
So you had three and we're down to two?
Um that's correct, yeah.
And it's moving along and um. Yeah, I I was just curious. Uh so they the the ones that you have, they 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 look good, the resumes are are good and.
Yeah, both of the both of the two remaining remaining people are gonna uh very excellent planners. Uh the the third uh had more administration experience. Uh so the 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 two remaining have less administrat- uh administrative experience. Whereas the the remaining two have have uh I would say superior planning experience. Um so so uh there's there's really no downside to having losing this this other candidate. It's just it changes our future priorities between how I will work with them. I'll just have to take on more of an administrative more of the administrative tasks than than originally planned.
So you it's gonna be you, Carrie, and Beth Rudolph that are that'll be making the final decision?
No, Taylor makes the well, technically Beth makes the final decision on the strong advice of Taylor's preference for who he'd like to work with. I'm part of the interview panel to make sure that
Okay.
it's a good fit with the planning board. I know you'll have questions about their background and um sort of, you know, interest in prioritizing our historic resources. I will get a sense of what their what their expertise priorities are. Um
Great.
Of course, of course, we'll just I'll I'll trust Taylor's judgment. That's who will see them the most.
And and what's what's the expected uh timeframe you're thinking about about wrapping, you know, uh I guess making making the final call?
Well, it's gonna depend on when the person can start. It's also gonna depend on I'm gonna have to have a serious conversation probably with Carrie and the rest of you all about when
Sure.
when when should that person start? Because
Right.
I was actually thinking it would be great to have the person start immediately in August. But with such a crunch to Springtown meeting, I don't know if it's the best time to add on additional work to teach someone.
It might be extra. It might be extra work to get them up to speed. Yeah.
So so it's worth a con- a a a conversation. We'll first ask the uh the final person when they want to start, and then we'll work from there.
Great. Sounds great.
It's exciting. It's great to see it in place or close, close, very close. Are there updates from other members of the board or any questions on anything that we just said? Great. Uh so we're a minute ahead of schedule. So we don't have Diab. Uh the master plan implementation committee is definitely um a high priority for Diab, but I think it's worth talking about and um getting some framework in place so that we can make sure that we keep moving forward on it. So for for background for our millions of listeners or or newer members, the the master plan implement the M-PIC or the master plan implementation committee was sort of um put together. It was it was meant to be put together at the end of the completion of the master plan process. Um it was meant to be composed of the town planner, a youth representative, and then two two representatives from each of four core areas uh that are that are that are the framework for the four action points. Um I mean, for the met for like the hundred plus action points within the master plan. Um unfortunately, the master plan dropped in like I March or April of twenty twenty. So the M-PIC didn't get put together right in time, and then we were without a town planner. And so now we're we're revisiting it. Um and I think it's worth us spending some time thinking about whether whether it was proposed, you know, I mean, it was proposed correctly for the time, but whether that that composition is still correct and whether the time is now. So the four areas in the master plan uh that were meant to be uh that were meant to be um sort of sort of stewarded by the M-PIC were balanced balancing development and preservation, connecting people with places, ensuring sustainability, and building community. Those were the broad strokes. Um and the the role of the M-PIC was to make sure that the planning board, who is mainly responsible for executing the master plan, has a has an independent set of eyes on it to keep us from focusing on you know, sort of pet projects and things that are easy for planning and to make sure that there's coordination between all the groups that have to come together to really manifest the master plan. Um some of the goals is I was sort of, you know, I I go back to it. I'm sure we all go back to it um periodically to make sure that it's it's fresh in our mind and it's a roadmap for what we're up to. Some of the things, you know, we have achieved and some of them um we're definitely diving, you know, well into. We have increased staff uh for the planning department. We're working on that now. We have a town plenary, which wasn't an issue when we wrote the master plan, but then it was. Um and technically, most planning departments would include the sustainability director, which was its own goal, but it's also expanded our capacity. Um we're diving into North Main. We have plans within this year to work on the Holton Cross Swanton area. Um we've approved ADUs. We've increased um the ease of zoning for multifamily housing, which um our hand was forced a little bit, but it did mean that we met a goal. Um we've created cultural districts and seen those really come alive. Some of the some of the goals we've sort of met, and I think we would be really happy with doing a review of them. Some of them were we're definitely behind on, and some of them overlap with some current efforts. There's several economic development goals that may be covered in the process that's happening now. But again, it would be nice to have some stewardship of it. Um there are things we probably just aren't fresh on. Uh I'm not sure what's happening with historic resource inventory. Um I I know I'm never quite current enough on the um on the facilities master plan. I always feel like I'm a bit behind on what's funded and what's current there. So so there are some pieces that have fallen to the um to other committees that we're less aware of. So in terms of thinking about the M-PIC going forward, it might be helpful. I'll make a suggestion, and then I'll open it up for anyone who has thoughts on it and wants to think about it. There there is a strategies index at the end of the master plan action plan, which is about seven pages of of bullet points um that summarize the action points, and then you can sort of work your way backwards to educate yourself on the ones that are less familiar. Um and it might be helpful for, you know, either Brian and I or um whoever. I mean, I'm sure Diab would like to be involved, but we have to be cautious not to hit Quorum in a side conversation to do sort of a quick audit and narrow the list down and see where we think we've really undertended the goals of the master plan. Um twenty twenty-five will be the halfway point. It's it's, you know, master plan twenty thirty. So the goal is to have it, you know, the vision at least well on its way, if not manifested by twenty thirty. I really struggle to imagine it'll be buttoned up by then. Some of the goals are pretty lofty. Um and I also struggle to imagine that we'll fund a new master plan in twenty thirty, but we might. And regardless, it was our commitment, and so we should make sure we're on track. So so one idea is that we could just do a quick audit and see where our weak areas are and then figure out how to sort of structure the M-PIC to make sure that we're keeping eyes on our current work and also um moving forward the things that are that are maybe being under under um uh undertended. Um but I'm 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 open to suggestions, and I and I'd like to hear your thoughts on it.
I'm just wondering. Oh, go go ahead, Brian.
Go go ahead, Nick. Go ahead, Nick.
No, 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 you go, you go.
So I I was gonna ask a naive question, which I think you answered, but uh forgive me. So there is no M-PIC at the moment, correct?
It never really coalesced. It was it came up a lot. Um it's, you know, Rich
Yeah.
kind of tries, you know, he's definitely been sort of the best um the best member of the of the town community to try and get it to to get some traction. And there are some folks around. I I'm gonna miss names if I start naming people. There are other people who have been really um fidelity about trying to get it going, and it's never never gelled.
I guess I I my question is sort of, I'm I I'm wondering like who's gonna be on the who's gonna be on this? With with maybe some concern that, okay, we're setting up another shadow committee that's gonna start making decisions. Um you know, so I'm so just with a little concern as to who's gonna be who's gonna be on it and and maybe wanting to have um you know, I don't know, some some familiar faces that 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 I I trust um on there. Um I I'm not sure. Um I like your idea of doing the audit.
Right.
And seeing where we are.
And I agree with you. Do we need one more committee?
Right.
We're putting together our our um you know, our stakeholders to weigh in on North Main, and our Z-Rat continues, and now we would have a committee arguably to form a few committees because a handful of the suggestions were, you know, a district improvement financing program, Main Streets Organization, you know, Economic Task Force. So
Yeah, yeah, it seems like a lot. It seems like a lot to me to have reporting to us.
Right.
Um if we can get the same work done. You know, without it, but then uh but you know.
We also don't wanna be we don't want to be insular, you know, we don't want to kind of say, you know, because again, we're doing when I looked at the list, I was like, well, the planning board's doing the planning board stuff. And and David Miller, who's chair of Concom and the Permanent Street Tree Committee um reached out independently and kind of out of the blue to ask about M-PIC on uh uh last week. And so
Okay, great.
I'm trying to get a sense of what his, I think he's thinking it will be, you know, Permanent Street Tree Committee is a fairly new committee, and it's one that's trying to to get a lot done. And I think he's sort of just leveraging all the tools he can find. So I think he's wondering if something that's in action. Should we is it are there opportunities that are being missed? I don't think he has anything, but he would he would be able to fill in a lot of things that we don't have answered. Um you know, the building community and connecting people with places covers I guess connecting people with places probably looks the most at um open space and then also transportation, and I feel very out of date there. So maybe one thing that we do for it is just have some visitors, you know, have some folks from different committees pop in and kind of give us where are you with your, you know, where's Concom with the master plan? What's happening with the transportation? You know? One of them was, you know, have we done a flood risk assessment? That's that's sort of appropriate for the current climate. Um you know, is the hundred-year flood risk still a hundred-year flood, or is it more like a ten or twenty-year flood? Um and do we have a current emergency plan? You know, some of those things that we were just meant to do a lap on um are probably existent. We just don't know where to reference them.
So if I could follow up on to my question of whether we had an M-PIC in place was great. Um I mean, not great, but the answer is the answer. Um if having an M-PIC uh one of the um objectives of of the master plan, I need to relook at it. I I agree that I think we should look at it and decide what needs to get done before we make another committee. Um but I also don't want, we're gonna become very busy very fast, and
Yep, more meetings.
And and we could easily find that we have done nothing on this uh for six months or a year. Um come Springtown meeting and say, well, something else got in the way. So I I love looking at it right now and deciding what we maybe want to focus on, but I also I just don't want to bite off something that that we that we won't chew. Um so if if having an M-PIC was actually specified, I have to go back and look. Um it might be worth having that be a one of the action items along the way. I don't mean first, but um.
We have a we have a page dedicated to M-PIC on the town page. It's a, you know, it's sort of introduced um and described on the town website. I can't remember if it's a bullet of the ma- it was definitely part of the meetings at the end of the master plan process, but I don't remember if it was a commitment that we made in the master plan. Um and to your timing point, I mean, we've we're we're cramming plenty into the summer. And and that will naturally sort of like, you know, tumble into November when town meeting starts for fall. But again, twenty twenty-five is the midpoint. So maybe we plan, you know, maybe we start to sort of decide what we might need, and we 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 put a little more elbow grease into it, starting at the beginning of twenty twenty-five with a goal of doing sort of a halfway. I mean, I don't I I we're mostly just information gathering at this point, you know, sort of where are we? And and um Taylor, you have your hand up.
Yeah, so I I I can't I can't find it, but the the M-PIC is an existing board with existing members. The reason we need to talk about it now is because the 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 memberships of that board have expired. So um
Was there a product in them?
No, there was no, there was no, there was no product. So regardless, so if we want to continue using the M-PIC, which was a part of the action plan, not the master plan, it was part of the action plan of the master plan. Um if we want to continue using using that, we need to reappoint new members. If we don't want to use it, well
Who's there currently since they didn't really get to?
We can absolutely do that. We need to ask people if they want to keep keep being on it.
Yeah.
Um.
We just we don't know who they are at this point.
I I can't find the list. I think that I don't have access to it remotely. I think it's on the town clerk um thing uh site, but I can I can send it over.
For for an upcoming meeting to just use on there or even, you know, it'd be be curious to see who's on there.
Yeah.
Um and I will say Sally put together, we we had thought about mentioning it at uh at Springtown meeting, and we had so much to pack in that we did not. But Sally and her infinitely beautifully organized work um has has a nice um write-up on it. So, okay, so the ad hoc members. Hmm we had, we ha- I have Rich Rohan and Sue Carney as the members of M-PIC. I have Dylan Ketterer as the youth representative, and I have the planning board liaisons as Diab and Sally. Um. And there's a lot, there's there's more about the appointment process. Uh in her work, which I just found doing a quick search, so I'd sort of forgotten about this, but of course, it's lovely because Sally's work is lovely. So I will share this with you. And um I I think we mostly needed to open the discussion. I think Diab would have been the person to have here for this, and because we're missing him, I don't want to go too far into it. Taylor, anything else we should? Here, let me let me forward this to you.
I I don't think that there's anything else. I don't think any decision needs to be made made tonight. I mean, it 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 is it is certainly my recommendation that if we want to continue using the 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 M-PIC, which I will note the the whole point of the M-PIC, at least the way that it was set up, was to alleviate the amount of work on the on the planning board. Um but I I this this isn't something that we should we can discuss it now, but it isn't something that should go into action until after a town meeting.
Right. But if there are, if there are, yeah. Uh we shouldn't set aside sort of like every meeting, but if there's something like send an email to Rich and Sue to see if they're still interested or Dylan or whoever. Did he grad- is he still here?
Uh I think he graduated. A youth representative from four years ago probably isn't here anymore.
I know, I'm trying to think.
I think he graduated this year.
Oh, okay. That's too bad. The speedy pace of town.
Yeah, too bad he graduated. Yeah.
We'll bring him back. You need a gap. You're gonna come back and do your work. Uh, okay, let me um. Forward this. Okay. Anything else on M-PIC? I I um I we were very late getting to Michael last time, and I want to make, I mean, we have six minutes left, so we could still continue.
It looks like Michael's here. Um but anyway.
I don't think he would be upset to start early. And pick slides would be useful. Uh da da da. But they, I mean, if we, you know, if they wanted to be reappointed and and you know, takes to even take even some of this work off of us, that could be great.
Who were the members again? That you that you
Sue Sue Carney, Rich Rohan, Dylan Ketterer, and then the I'm forwarding you Sally's slides right now.
Okay, I know Rich Rich Rohan is now on finance committee, so I don't believe he's um according to the town council able to be on another committee at the moment. So um so according to the town council. So so we might have to get new people anyway, so it'll be
Sue's definitely on.
Say the names again, because I want to I just want to make a note of them. Steve Carney, Rich Rohan.
No, no, Sue Carney.
Oh, Sue Carney.
Mm-hmm. She I know she's on town meeting. I don't think she's on any other
Okay.
committees. Um and then
And then who else?
The the youth person, we think graduated, but it was Dylan Ketterer. And then the planning board liaisons were Diab and Sally.
Okay. Great, thanks.
And it's it seems like that's it seems like, yeah, I mean, unless Diab wants to continue in that role. Um especially as as um recent past chair. Chair and vice chair probably make the most sense as planning board liaisons, unless somebody's really passionate about it, in which case.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. That makes sense to me, Carrie.
Okay, uh, okay, so so that's on our radar. Um I sent the slide from Sally around. Maybe we can just we'll we don't need to belabor it, but we can maybe send an email to Sue. I don't know. Okay, are we okay with getting started four minutes early, not to shatter records here, but we were so late last time.
I don't know that we're gonna miss. I I'm okay with it. Um I I know it's probably would be fine.
Sure.
Maybe we could just spend our first three minutes asking Michael how he is and if he's enjoying his summer. Hi, Michael.
Hi, how are you all? I am well, and I am enjoying my summer.
Great.
Yeah.
Could do a quick slideshow of the Pacific Northwest from Brian, or we can just get get down to it.
I'm actually in the in Montana at the moment.
Oh.
So um I escaped the humidity, but it's still warm. So, yeah.
It's gross here. Stay in Montana. Okay, so um Tay- I'm gonna let Taylor kind of run this this bit if that's okay.
Sure. Um so uh thank you for ever for, you know, everyone looking at, or if you if if you had time to to look at some of the visioning stuff. Um, thank you for that. Let me pull it up. Uh Michael and I talked briefly and you know, we 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 talked about how to make this this conversation the best that we possibly can. I think Mike, let me know if you don't agree with this, but I think opening it up maybe just right up the bat with questions, or do you have a do you have a um a system that you've put into place to show showcase some of your 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 ideas?
Well, um I having not seen um a lot of comments, um you know, before the meeting here, I think I just Brian sent an email. Um I wasn't sure where this was gonna go and if you guys were going to sort of lead the charge with asking questions or or not. So I I spent some time yesterday and today um just collecting some some additional thoughts um and and also um put together a few zoning precedent examples and design guideline precedent. Someone had asked about Assembly Row, so I've got some pieces and some pieces of that. Um and I've got um an interesting new document that was just released a little over a month ago on the uh Watertown Square um area plan, uh which sort of grows out of the recent Newton rezoning effort. So I've got a bunch of things I can share that might um trigger um a more in-depth discussion, but I I I imagine, Taylor, that we will just start and open it up for people to ask questions or whatever sequence you guys would prefer.
Yeah, let's 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 first just go through the 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 visiting the visioning document and just see 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 if we can kind of spark some some conversation around uh um around this. So right right now, we're looking at um at E one. Yeah, I'm trying. Yeah, I'm trying my screen, right?
Can you zoom in? Can you zoom in on that? So it fills the thought left or, yeah, I'm, oh, well, there, that's better. Now I can see it. Thank you.
Is there a way for the folks following along at home to do the videos of those districts or no?
What do you mean?
Like to play them live as part of this, like to lead off the conversation with the, so we all have in our head where we're, what we're looking at or no?
Uh, I'm not prepared to make that a reality. I can, I can, for future conversations, yes. I can, I can set that up. I'm, I, but I don't, eh, yes.
Uh, Taylor, just to interject there, I, I do, I have Google Earth open, if that's helpful, and I also have a, a GIS map that identifies the parcels. Then E, E one and W one, but, um, that, that's all available resource if you need it.
Great. Great. So right now we're just focusing on, on these, based off of our pre- previous co- conversations dating back to. Last fall, these, these were, these are really identified as. You know, high, high development op- opportunity areas, um, based off of the larger part. Part parcel size compared to the rest of, of North Main and it's, um. Uh, how, how close it is to the central business district. Um, so these, these are kind of, is a good, a good starting point because we're kind of starting, starting large with larger ideas. And then seeing how that compares to the rest of, of the, of the corridor. Um, some of the early zoning goals, yeah, just early zoning goals that we were talking about, uh, was mixed use of ground, ground floor re- retail. Um, high density residential and four stories. What we'll see is, I think. For what we meant by four stories was four stories minimum. Um, will, we see that in, uh, in the graph, in the. Down below here, we're talking about four and a half stories and Michael can kind of get into why the half story is. Kind of important and, um. And, and, and how the half story can really be strategically used to add. Development, um. In, or to incentivize development without adding too much height to setbacks and so on, so forth, and adding different, uh, types of roof types. But, uh. Let me just go through two with the chara- the characteristics of these two, um, of the, these two areas. So, so, so east one. Um, given its proximity to the CBD and, and the MBTA station, it is intended to promote higher density mixed use development. That incorporates ground floor, commercial re- uh, ground floor, commercial uses that contribute to creating a vibrant pedestrian streetscape environment. Um, and that is, uh, the same thing for both, uh, E one and, and E two. So really creating that continuous, that, that, that continuation of the central business district. Where we left off, um, in, in the spring, uh, we have, uh, W one and W. Uh, and E one. Uh, maxed heights are is going to be for residential only. MU is going to be for mixed use. So you see mixed use development is intended to be, um, in incentivized. Uh, where we don't want to, uh, we don't want to say. We want to continue allowing residential only by right, but we want to promote, uh, promote mixed use development. Over, over residential. Yeah, I think, I think that's kind of a brief, a brief explanation of, of kind of where we left off for these, for, for these two districts. And I think the, the best thing for us to do right now is just to have kind of open up a conversation. I mean, the first thing is, is what questions do we have? Brian brought up a great question about. About stories and half stories. It's one that, that, that we can go over, but you know, what, what other? What, what are some of the things that jump off, off right now, whether it be the characteristics, whether it be our goals for this? Or whether it be, you know, something more specific like building height.
I want to spend a little time thinking about parking east one versus west one, but go ahead. Whoever's starting. The lots on.
What, uh, for mixed use? Do we have, uh? Uh, did I miss it or? So we have, uh. We have the permitted uses for that commercial space here. That's right, we do.
Indoor community. Which is also just a draft.
Right, yeah.
The uses for mixed use, I think in that area should be thought about pretty carefully. But I, again, I think we discussed last time that we would probably do the uses last, once we had a sense of density in the, but I, um, we could jump to it if we want to.
I was thinking that. That's where you get that, that extra height. The extra story. I mean, I think sixty-five feet. Is pretty tall. For that area.
So I believe that we, that we got to that sixty-five, just for, for clear, just for context, for John and Brian, we got to the sixty-five, assuming. Um, a thirteen, uh, minimum thirteen foot, uh, ground floor. For commercial. Uh, plus three, three and a half floors of residential is what brought us to the sixty-five, just for, just for reference.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it, it's. I think the, uh, for what you're. Trying to include in the building, the height makes sense. Um, it's. Still tall. Feels tall for that area. So you wouldn't, in this example. Would you need to have, um? You could do mixed use. At a lower height. We would permit that?
Yeah, there would be no, yeah, there, there, uh, we have a minimum height of twenty-four feet. But you could, if you want to develop anything. Above, anything between twenty-four and sixty-five, you'd be able to do that.
And you increase the flurry ratio a little bit.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I guess, I guess we have, have to, so we, but. I actually hadn't thought that far, but, but yeah, eh, eh, yeah, we'd, we'd have to, you know, allow.
We have, I mean.
Some, some sort of change, yeah.
The proposal here is, it was an increase, which it makes sense. You know, when you look at the rear setback. We go back to the map, what? What do those really back up to? We're looking at.
So E one, uh, backs up to the, uh, the ball fields, uh, for the high school. The track, train track, or the MWRA right of way is right at the edge of E one. And so you have the, uh, well. Bring up the better.
No, that, that was, that was good. I know that.
So E one, we have, um. The high school ball fields. And then Bellino Park up here on Swanton and then, um. Parked.
Right, but in, in terms of the, the rear setback. Uh, I'm thinking. You know, usually you have a rear setback because you have, you know, neighbors, um. People living there. Here we have. You know, an unused railroad track area and the ball fields and. Maybe, uh. Maybe we could reduce that setback and maybe.
I think the setback for E one is. It's rear.
Yeah, I mean. I don't think, uh. I don't. Think the field would notice zero or twenty, you know, zero or twenty would be, the impact on the field would be. Hard to measure.
We definitely had that conversation before, when we start going up in the future conversations, we want to be much more wary about the setbacks. That twenty-foot setback has been requested many times over in these residential areas, but I think that.
Well, we're talking about the, you know, the east side and over by the park view. What did happen to the, the railroad track land there? Uh, and where will we measure? Would really. Measure from. The MBTA property?
Yeah, so you could, you see here that, the, the, uh. Parking lot right here, at the ball field here, if you draw a straight line up. That's where it is. And yeah, it would be right at that property line because we can't, we can. We can pave over the easement, but we can't build over it.
Right, but you could build up to it. Can we?
I, I don't know the terms of the easement off, off, off hand, but, but yeah, we can build to it.
You know, I don't. I'm not su- sure it's a problem to build to. I mean. The thing's probably. Twenty feet wide anyway.
One question.
I'm just thinking, it, it, it gives you just more flexibility in, uh, you know, in this. You know, if you read what we're trying to create, we're trying to create. You know, an attractive main street. If you have that extra depth. You know, you can use it in the front perhaps. You know. Really connect the building and the space a little more to the, the pedestrian. Walkway, you don't have to. You know, you can have more, you, you can set, set it back a little.
And one, 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 one thing we want to think about is, uh, that, that probably will want to have the parking in the, in the rear, uh, although I. Um, and I don't know whether that, uh. Impacts. I mean, I guess they would make that decision regardless of what the setback is.
Well, you, you could park in the rear, but you could park under the second floor. You know?
That, well, that's right.
You know, it really gives you a, a more flexibility.
That's true.
Uh, it's easier, I think. Lack of a better word, a little easier to make. S- s- some, you know, demands in the front is to, uh. You know. Requiring things that tend to eat up square footage. Your square footage on, on the property.
Yeah, although it doesn't have a residential neighbor, the, the. Attend, yeah, anyone attending a ball field will be looking at the back of the building, so I'd like to make sure there's enough space for landscaping or trees to be planted.
I mean, just looking at the map, we're looking. Uh, I mean, I've walked there all the time, you know, you can't even. You'd never know the car wash is there. You know, you can't see most of them. There is that little. Thirty-seven hundred square foot. Triangle right by the parking lot. Yeah. I mean, that has been a, uh. A difficult lot. The, the one, the, the triangle, not the, uh. Yeah, right there. You know, I always. I always thought. Something could be done with it. The town has the answer to do something that, that. That lot, well, they did until they put the. Uh, parking lot there, but that used to be a railroad track, the lot was that shape, couldn't. It. The rear lot line was established by the railroads. And, um. It's a nice, it could be a nice spot, but it's really too small, but it, you know, that would certainly benefit from zero setback. I mean, it has one now. I think it's been treated that way. You know, because it went, it was backed up. To the elevated, you know, the railroad track. Which at that, there was a bridge there. Really, I'm just.
So is your suggestion that we decrease the setback from twenty feet to?
Five.
I tend to agree with John. I'm, I'm very worried about neighbors, but there. Aren't any real neighbors there. And so like, if we're in a different zone, I would, I would be like flinching, but here I think. Um, actually, it could be really nice depending on how, how it faces the ball field, um. Uh, I mean, I could picture people sitting out in their patios on the upper floors, watching a ball game from up there. I mean, it could be, it could be synergistic how it's done, if it's done right, um, and being closer is not a problem and a lot of that, yeah, that's a great map to see. I agree. I wouldn't say zero, just because zero is always scares me, but five or some, you know, some small number, I think makes sense.
I, I will push a little bit back on the five, because I don't think it'll be space enough to plant trees and because that's the east facing, it will get lots of light. And for shading units, it might be helpful to have a line of trees there, so maybe ten? Michael, what are we not thinking of?
Well, a couple of thoughts. I mean. Whoever develops that can decide they want to make it ten, uh, if they are looking for that shading factor, so it's, it's, you're really setting a minimum, right? So, uh, and then it's just like with parking, there's a degree of, um. The choice of the developer as to what they really want to provide. Um, I, I guess my other big question is. The, the right of way there, uh, in the past, Taylor, I think we've been including that in the. In the zone, um, with the thought that maybe that would get. Um, aggregated with some other parcels, am I thinking about that right? So because then the setback is actually at the edge of the field and not the edge of the right of way, so that's something to think about, I don't know.
Yeah, there's, 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 there's an opportu- uh, not, not a guarantee, so it's not, it's not, you know, we need to be careful about that. But there, but there's an opportunity because it has been used on. Or north on the same, on the same easement to use the easement for other purposes, such as parking or. Or something else. It's not guaranteed, but. But it, you know, it could potentially be, be used.
I think it might be. Yeah, you know, for, if you're going to develop the property. You know, if the town. And the developer. If the town sort of says, yeah, go ahead and pave it, you know. You can use it to come up with the required parking or the parking that, you know, you. Figure you need, you, you're going to require for this, if, you know, maybe it's a different number, but, um. The developer. Is going to be thinking. About the financing and insurance part of this. And. One of those two groups is going to ask about the ownership and do you have the rights to it? And who's liable? It's, it's tricky. I mean, I. I would be hesitant to make it a kind of. A, a cr- a critical piece to make my development work. If I couldn't document, I can do this, you know, and I. And the town really isn't authorized to do that. I would expect that. My, I have a little experience with MBTA easements. You know. They're tricky. Yeah, you can, they'll let it go, they'll sell it sometimes, you know, or make an adjustment, but. I don't think we can. But you can sort of see that if you let them build up potentially to the edge. Terms of the. You still have that buffer there. They're not going to put a train down it yet.
And the field parking is on some of that easement, I believe, at the bottom. Right there, I believe, yeah.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's not going away, that parking.
No. You know, I, I don't actually, I'd have, you'd have to pull the deeds and look. Um, they sold some of that, I know. The town may, you know. Just bought that from the town. Or the town may have purchased it.
Right, I think that, that, that's it, that's great, that's good, um. Conversation to have. I mean, we're going to talk about setbacks. In a lot of the other, a lot of the other ones too. Um. You know, on the, on the west side, I think the setback situation, at least in the rear, is. A little bit different because we have. You know, we have wetlands or we have a stream here. Broke, you know, we had some environmental concerns on the back of the of the west side, you know. Carrie, my question to you is, does the setback that we set, or at least from your point of view, does the setback that we set on the west side? Matter as much as the. As the the word of of Concom, so if we if we set, just hypothetically, if we set the setback at at ten feet. But. But Concom, you know, never lets it be more than twenty. Is 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 that something that that could that could happen?
Yeah, I mean, I the Wetlands Protection Act will be the Wetlands Protection Act, if you can move something out of the twenty foot buffer into the hundred foot, then it's more a Concom thing. And also, I think the contour of the lots of some of those are pretty funky, right? So I don't, I think.
Yeah, there's like a cliff, this is like a cliff right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, there is parking there, it is already. It's those lots are already, I think, probably built farther than Concom would currently allow, and because they're degraded, because they're already paved lots that have been developed. It would, it would be nice to pull them back, you know, it'd be nice to sort of set the setback that protects the wetland, but it's not going to be all of those properties. So the trick is going to be, you know, we don't want to set. We don't want to set the setback based off of those, you know, three properties that are bordering the pond. Because then those three properties at the top would be limited by a rule that's not going to apply. So I think the Wetlands Protection Act will probably. Will probably limit more than than we need to.
It's I I could just add, it's very common to have, you know, multiple. Rear setback, like you say, that setback is different if it's a budding or residential district, for example.
We we have that in.
Yeah, that could cure those top parcels.
Yeah, are there any so that top that top property right next to Clark? I know Castle Tire is like the last. Larger parcel, but what's? Is that Clark is densely residential, so we don't want to. We want that to adapt a bit more than we need to for the sections that are up against, you know, the public works or something. Is it Tyler? Is it that's a no, Sash Place is further up. What's next to Clark Street? Harla.
Yeah, former.
Yeah, so.
The used car dealer and then Clark goes down here and it's only these two for just for W. One, it's only these two lots here that abut that abut residential, so if you go here. This one. That's unbuildable, but it does technically, but. Then you have this, which the used car lot, which abuts eighteen twenty.
Right. So we want to be sensitive to those two lots in a way that's so we may have to write in, but how do we do that, Michael? Do we say unless it abuts a residential property and then the blah blah, or how do we do that?
Yeah, you know, you just have a separate line in your criteria that says in abutting and it could be. Any any of the setbacks side or rear, it can just be a general saying any any. Setback that abuts the district has a different criteria. I I'm remembering that we did include eighteen to twenty Clark in our feasibility studies of the corridor and I I guess I'm. I'm there, there's another example of a location that I'm not sure is in or out of the district, so.
The the other thing to think about is building height, it would be sort of fine for the parcels that are budding, you know, the that funky cliff, but the. We don't want to put five stories next to someone's home, especially on the west side where we would just shadow them for the rest of their days here.
And and again, Carrie, that's something that Newton just recently did where they have a four and a half foot height, a four and a half story height. Across the district and then when you're within fifty feet of a residential district, it steps down to three and a half maximum, so.
Okay.
Those kinds of things are not uncommon to include.
And and we have in this draft, it's been put in a minimum setback to residential, so I assume that would be. Those two lots that about the residential would both be subject to that minimum setback to residential twenty feet. I mean, it it in the draft at least.
Right.
I like the maybe the distance mark demarcation might be good to include.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean.
The Michael, you're you're saying the same thing, you're saying adjacent to a residential lot and he's saying fifty feet or something from an adjacent lot, so you're counting. I'm assuming you're kind of counting if you're diagonal from it or if you're abutting it or.
Well, one was a setback of of building footprint and the other is determining how high that can be, right? So one can, the setback can be, if I'm understanding what you're asking, Carrie, the the building footprint setback can be twenty feet, but the. It can still require the dropping of a story, you know, for in for fifty feet.
Oh, I see. Okay, gotcha. Okay, and we may we may want to parse that, so so. So so east one and west one. Park parking requirements. What is the, are we at the point, what are we, what's our minimum parking for these two? Point seven.
The current draft has point seven five per dwelling unit and. I think point seven five per thousand square feet of of commercial.
So. I I almost want us to think about the parking sort of possibilities in West One seem like they would be much more limiting than the parking. Requirements for East One, and I don't know if we should think about those differently and require them differently because it would be nice if we took those deeper lots. And and sort of like, you know. Or may take the more shallow lots and give them a break, I guess. I don't know. But I, Board's thoughts on that, that.
I mean, the the shallow lots on the east side dimensionally. You know, are difficult to work with. The the point about the, you know, the water. Is absolutely correct, it's we can say whatever we want, but. They're probably not going to be able to to build nearly as close as, you know, twenty feet.
Are you saying that we might need, we might need? To encourage. Developers to put parking on the west.
I mean, do we want to, you know, I'm thinking point seven five, odds are good, at least in the short term, everyone's moving in with a car, so do we want to make the parking requirements on east one, one per unit? In the west side, you know, point seven five or point five. So that we take more cars off the street and get them parked at the larger lots.
So.
Right.
We're saying that.
Yeah, I I mean, I I think I think parking is is an important. It's an important thing to have and in in, I I think it's important not to write it off. Too 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 quickly.
Because we do want this to be a mixed use building, so we want people who are going to show up during the day, you know, shop around, have lunch and leave, so when they're. Thinking about the parking for their for their businesses, you know, it it's just, if we can sort of like accommodate a few more. It just seems like it's going to ease the the visitation to that area. If we've got one side that's shouldering a bit more of the parking, but I I don't know. I don't know how to predict that.
Question I don't know the answer to, and maybe John, you do know is. Will a developer stick with those, if we say the minimum is. Point five for dwelling unit, are they going to put in point five or is that not? Going to allow them to sell or rent what they have anywhere and they're going to put in more than not the minimum, are they going to put in more than that?
Well, parking, you know, as it is currently. You know, parking is. The limiting factor on on units, you know, two, two per door. Is a lot, it takes up a lot of space. You know, for markets like Winchester. There isn't a great understanding or confidence yet about what that space is worth. I think everyone's very comfortable with having one space per. Selling the unit without parking, it's a little difficult to know what it's worth. We we talk about this all the time. You know, is it worth? Is it worth a hundred thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand, fifty thousand?
I mean, it's it's certainly a headache for the owner to to have a a unit without.
You know, you don't, and that's, you know, that's the interesting thing, you run into owners. Who, you know, boast, kind of boast about not owning a car. And plenty of people who only have one car. And lots of lots of parking, but they still only have one car. It's it's a little bit of an unknown, you know? I think the way you kind of look at it is that if. You're kind of pretty happy with the project. Building the units with one space and then, you know, you'll 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 add some units maybe with no spaces. And roll the dice a little. But it is a little unknown. You know, we haven't really seen that in markets like Winchester, Woburn or. Much, you know, in Arlington. For years, it was death. No parking. You know.
So John, are you suggesting if we set the minimum at point seven five that the developers will choose to do one per unit?
You know, probably would like that, yeah. Yeah, I think.
What was what was Arlington? What was their situation?
Well, in Arlington, you know, fifteen years ago, no parking was death. You just weren't going to sell it, it was going to be just, you were going to be really punished in the market and that has changed. You know, I hear that has changed. It's a different world, you know, it's 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 evolved. People really don't go to work every day. You know.
And the winters aren't as bad, frankly.
Yeah, they're not, it's a different. And I, we just, we don't know, but I can tell you that. You know, I'd like to have the have the one, two, everyone agrees is. Not necessary in a lot of cases. You know, when I look at the east side. I look at those lots and you think about trying to package parking in. And it's tricky, you know, the only thing you have going for you is is the rear of the lot is a lower elevation, so you're already kind of down the hill. Because you're not to park under, but it's difficult to maneuver, it's it's very tricky. I only see one that looks. You know, doable. But the other side, the west side, oh, these are. You can do a lot of interesting stuff over there.
Do you mean the other way around, or do you mean?
I'm sorry, I mean, the east is is by the the ball field and the perfume, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I mean, yeah. And the west side is the one that's very challenging in terms of. Getting a car off the street, I mean, it's challenging now, you know, if you ever drive over, you know, visit any of those buildings is tricky. And and the waters. Adds. Difficulty.
One of those buildings has parking behind it down the hill, the.
Right, right, the bagel. Yeah, the bagel and the tailor, you know.
They've got a large number, like they've got to have fair numbers of spots down there, yeah.
Right, right.
Is that a historic property? What's the, does anyone know the year that building was built? It's that big brick building, right?
Yeah, I I don't know if. That's it, there you go. I think that the the date is probably right there in the middle. If we can. Zoom in on it.
It's like one that we would want to.
Hero or something like.
Yeah. But I, you know, that parking, every time I go down there, I drive down there, I think. I think that there is no way you could propose something like that, have all that water just rushing down the hill into the.
That's, yeah, we use that, that's where the karate studio is. And so I'm very familiar with that lot, I use, we use it.
Dicey.
When it rains, the water must just go. Flooding down there. And now that would.
Well, there's there's further slope beyond there.
Yeah, that's an interesting, I mean, it's an interesting building because with the wetlands right there, you would. Probably try to leave it as intact as possible. I don't, I can't remember frankly if how. How difficult it would be to add a story. But if it's a historic building and we're trying to encourage adaptive reuse and allow housing upstairs. It it seems pretty unlikely that that would get sort of like raised and rebuilt just because of the, we would, I I don't know the year of it, but it seems like.
It doesn't, it it doesn't look like a. Historic building from an important time period to me.
Right.
I mean, that doesn't, you know.
It's sort of funky spot. Right down there, but.
Or, I mean, it's been altered, it looks like it's from the thirties.
We can certainly imagine, though, that you probably couldn't rebuild that parking down there as is. So someone would someone would be happy to just keep it and say, I'm not touching this, we're just leaving it as is. And. It solves a lot of parking because I mean, there must be twenty five spots there total, something like that on.
The the lots get filled, I know, when they have the classes. And I don't know how they would, I don't know how they'd have that otherwise.
You could. You know. You could, you could add a story to it. It's probably a wood frame building. Be a lot of work, but. Can be done. I don't know who owns it, I mean, I haven't. There hasn't been a lot going on with it over the years.
Okay, what, Michael, what, pull us together a bit here, what what concrete stuff should we be?
Well. I I I think I've felt some resistance to this when I've mentioned this in the past, but I I'll just reiterate that. Towns and cities are are really going to reduce. Required parking minimums, and again, it's a required thing and it does allow. For, again, the developer's judgment, can he sell a unit without having a spot dedicated to it? So. And I think that there are all kinds of strategies of like unbundling parking, which means that if you're, if you have to pay for your parking spot, that tends to change people's. Equation as to whether or not they want a parking space or not. But I I just want to point out that, and I mentioned this in the past, that the whole Village Center rezoning in Newton. They literally have gone to zero minimum, so again, it's up to each. Property owner developer to decide what they feel the market bears out there.
Right, I.
Built with zero parking?
Well, I I I mean, I, that's a good question, Carrie, that's, but but that's just one of those things like, you know, the zoning. You know, it's they're trying to create a walkable P O D node because they're all, you know, they have the the green line stops and a lot of those centers. But I I just would say, mention one other thing, John, is that. This Watertown Square Area Plan, which I am going to share with you all, that interestingly, even though there is not a like a. A commuter rail or a train, a key stop there. It does have, you know, bus, good bus service, but they they're trying to promote a sort of a walkable center there and get more housing density to support the retail there and they are. Working towards a concept that has a point five. For for dwelling unit as a minimum and but they also have a. A one point oh maximum per dwelling unit because they're trying to. Encourage build out and 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 not dedicate so much space to parking. And there's a special permit process that can be added to that to if you want to further reductions or further additions of parking. That can go through a special permit process, but I I think between the Newton zero minimum and Watertown's most recent, which is basically the end of May. You know, five to a point five to one, that that in Arlington gets similar stuff going. You know, five to a point five to one, uh, that that and Arlington gets similar stuff going on with all their MBTA stuff, so. I think that's really the trend, um, that's what I would probably recommend and keeping in mind that it's just the. It's just a a minimum and again, it it can be market driven.
It's just hard to picture, I mean, Newton and Watertown are so much more sort of like service dense. In their downtown and the transportation picture is so different there, it's hard to picture. Living in downtown Winchester, but if we're, if we're zoning for mixed use, maybe the services increase where it's tenable, it's just hard to predict.
I mean, I think.
Well, I was just gonna say that I think that's, that's why we got to point seven five from where we were before. Um, is because of that. And 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 I thought that was the, I thought that was the discussion that we had had and we said, okay, well, let's bring it down to point seven five and. And uh. And that feels, I mean, that that feels comfortable, I I, my understanding is I.
And and to be clear, my question was as much, should we reduce it further for the west side? Are we limiting development on the west side? Because we're requiring point seven five, not necessarily, should we make the east side five spots per unit? But more, should we go a little tighter on the west side? And hope the east side absorbs some of the. Some of the parking because the arguably the businesses will be bigger, the residential dwellings will be bigger, so can we get some cars off the street over there? Um, but if if we're happy with point seven five on both sides and the developer's decision, maybe we think about. Do we want to work it in as a special permit option, but um, I'm happy with point seven five if it seems like it's the. A good starter discussion.
I would, I was gonna say, um, if I understood Michael correctly and what you just said, Kerry. I think point seven five makes sense, but I think going lower by special permit could actually be, I don't know how that would. I don't know the logistics of how you do that, but if you say you can go down to point five by special permit or something like that. So that if somebody has a a good argument for why they think that this development that they're bringing in will only need. Half a car per unit, um, they might be compelling the argument they're making, and then again, it might be hogwash, so it it's um, uh. Seems like lower by special permit makes sense. Um, especially for some of the west side, um, lots where it could be difficult, um. I don't know, I I I like that idea.
But what would? I agree, I I I'm having difficulty imagining what we would be listening to, what. What the special circumstances we'd be searching for.
Well, elder housing, if if the, if it's more of a care facility or something where the housing is um, communal or age restricted or. You know, I, why they would go lower, I don't know. It's, they're putting in a larger something. Okay, so, so we made the note that we're buffering for residential, we, so I I. I, it sounds like this would come down, I mean, we will vote on all of this eventually anyway, but. Um, I I still think fifteen to twenty feet setbacks because I would like to see the east side lined with trees. But um, I hear the discussion on the, on reducing the setback for the rear on. The, on the east side, I'm I'm hoping that we keep it to allow, um, to sort of encourage. You know, developers to look and say, what will I do with that space and we, you know, see more plantings, but on the west side. Go ahead.
On on that east side, if you, if you look at that, that aerial shot we had, there there, trees there. Those, those lots are pretty paved out. To the boundary.
They they could be.
And we have trees there, but I'm, what I'm thinking in terms of having more trees. It would be easier to get trees in the front. You know, if they could build to the back.
Shadow though, the we, the east side will be easier to grow them, right? I mean, we want the street trees, that's part of the whole complete streets plan, but that probably be street trees, it wouldn't necessarily, because we have a zero. I think the zero front, um, the zero front setback for that district is very appropriate because we want that to be. A vibrant walkable, you know, in and out of shops and restaurants and things. Um, and it, so that will be relying on the complete streets plan and trying to make space for trees on the bump outs and whatnot. But though, it'll be tougher to grow them if we have a four, four and a half story building and facing the street on the east side, it'll be shady.
Can someone tell me what? The meaning of minimum percent open area is, how that's defined? Because we have that at ten percent. I feel like with the floor area ratio and the heights we're looking at. Um, I don't see how it could be. Ever that. It would feel like it would always be higher than that, well, I don't know, I I'm confused exactly what that means. And how that interplays with our setback. Um, and uh. I I I just don't understand it well, I guess is what I'm saying.
We have to, uh. There's a definition in zoning for open area, right?
There, there, there is, so. There's a different, there's difference between open area and open space, I I'd I'd prefer not to get into the 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 verbiage. Uh, can of worms at this time, but the, Brian, to your, to your point. Um, the minimum area here is really just an arbitrary number at this point. Until we have the rest narrowed down, um. Uh, open area, the minimum open area will will come. It's, it it's, it, a lot of it is based off of calculation of 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 other dimensions, not entirely. But but most of it is, so that's one of the the things that we'll do after other decisions have have been made.
Okay, and that's, that's what I was sort of getting at, is I I didn't know if, like, of course it'll be ten percent, because if you do all the rest of the math. I mean, you end up with twenty percent no matter what you do, um, uh. And one, so one of my questions by email, which is just hard for me, is each of these things I can understand individually. But I'm having a hard time sort of picturing on a random lot in here, and they're all the lots are slightly different. If you make, if somebody comes in and builds the biggest thing they can build, what does that look like? Um, because. It's just hard to come, get all this together with, if they made a make a sixty five foot, four and a half story building. Um, then the floor area ratio comes in and we look at the setback, what does that building look like? Um, and I can't, I can't picture it in my head, too many, too many variables for me to picture what that building looks like. And but my, the reason I ask this is town meeting is gonna ask what that building looks like. Because they're gonna look at each of these things and they're gonna, they're gonna look at sixty five feet and they're gonna say, that's huge, it's gonna be a monster building. And I think we need to understand, what does it actually look like? And I just can't picture it in my head.
I I I know that we had one, we we did have a discussion about, um. I thought we had a discussion about the fact that you need sixty five feet to get to four stories. And so we raised it. Uh, from fifty something. Is that, i- i- is is that, um? Is that, is that? Does anyone recall that, or, um?
For, it was to get the four and a half stories, right?
Yeah.
Thirteen for the commercial. And then three and a half for the residential, which. Kind of fits into thirty something feet easily, you know?
But again, I mean, I I don't have a feeling for whether it would be too tall.
And then you have to consider that this area is all sloped, so you can take the average, you know, the footprint.
I I think.
And I wasn't being, I wasn't being critical of any of this, other than that there's so many different dimensions. That I just can't picture how the interplay between floor area ratio and height and setbacks. And how, what that ends up looking like is all I meant, not that I'm being critical of any of these numbers, but I just don't know what it looks like.
Let's let Michael help us here.
Well, uh, there's a couple of things on the table here, I I I do have a series of diagrams that I've done. That um, show the relationship. Uh, a co, in the column, it has, you know, different floor area ratios, one, one point two five and one point five, and then it's a grid. And across the top are three stories, four stories, and you know, and you can sort of see then. What results in building footprint based on if you have setbacks, um. With a one story building versus a two story building versus a three story building, and you can see how the footprints change and how that. Inversely affects the the open space percentage. Um, I've got that, it's a series of diagrams, it's a kind of complex to look at, but I'm, I'm happy to share that. Um, and as far as the the actual height of sixty five. Um, there's a a real subtlety in how that top. Point five is calculated and. Uh, the point being that you can either have a sloped top floor, um. And you're measuring to a certain height, or you can have a s- uh, stepped back top floor. Um, that has a flat roof, um, that you're measuring for, so. In some cases, you're, you're taking the commercial at the base and thirteen, I would say, kind of a minimum, I I. At sixteen is not uncommon, but then you have, you know. Basically, the three levels of uh, residential above that. Let's just say at ten and a half till we call it eleven feet, so that's a thirty three plus sixteen is, you know, forty nine, and then you've got this top story. Um, and if your definition of your height says you measure to the peak. And you've got a certain slope and all that, you're, you need to be around sixty five, I think, to to really get it in.
It does depend how you measure.
Yep.
Where you start.
With 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 this, uh, without you have this up there. How do you get the building to look like the top one? And with the, with the pitch of the roof, uh, off to the right, the mancere, the 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 window tile. Whereas the the bottom one, the 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 roof pitch is too shallow and it looks like a warehouse. So how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you, how do you get it to look like the top uh, diagram? Well, obviously, it's a difference of four stories uh, versus three stories and uh. With two over one versus three over one and. I think, um. I mean, that the houses to the right of the, of the top diagram have a, have a uh, a narrower pitch. The the bottom one looks like a, either a warehouse or a hanger to me. Because of the, because, you know, and and it it, so I'm I'm just stylistically. Wondering how we can, how we can push the top.
Yeah, the design guidelines that.
Well, I'll tell you, this is one of the big things about having the half story, because as soon as you allow the half story. It makes that roof level that you're in that bottom, uh, drawing there, it makes that occupiable and usable. So then you have dormers that get added, uh, so that's basically, and then it takes on a very different character. So I think, oh, sorry, John, go ahead.
Now, what you're saying is that, that bottom picture there, that is not a habitable top floor. Because it's 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 a shallow roof and what you're saying is if it was a steeper pitch. Then you could have living space and you could create that half store, right, this is.
Yeah.
This, that building does not have a half story, but a half story can add interest.
Exactly, yep.
Especially since you you wouldn't have this aerial view down on the street. You wouldn't be looking at quite so much roof shingle from the street.
Yeah, Nick, that's, that is actually probably another aspect to it, you're looking at the the aerial view. On the first story and the street view on the fourth story, so that, that as John points out, that makes a big difference.
I mean, it probably looks.
Brian. To an, to answer your question, Mi- Michael did this drawing. So this is, this is, this is E one, and this is.
Those are nice as well.
As close to, as close to what we can get to maxed out. This was before some of the, you know, nitty gritty details that we've added. But this is, this is pretty close to, and again, the perspective is gonna be much different than what it is when you're on the, when you're on the ground. But the the, this is pretty close to what you're gonna get for.
Drawings as examples or just illustrations um, in our text?
Uh, for the, for town meeting, we will have, we will have them for our presentation, we'll have different types of drawings for our article. But we'll have stuff like this for our, for our meetings.
And Nick, were you saying actually in the bylaws? Actually, in, actually, I was saying actually in the article, actually, uh. Like, I, I mean, I mean, the the drawings are really, really good. And they 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 really bring out the flavor of uh, the character. Um, this one, and then the 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 mancere. It'd be nice to have them interspersed, uh. Uh, in the actual article.
So one of the, I mean, I know the. This is something that will get some, hopefully. Some consistency across all of the districts and it's, I I don't know if. But this is, we have to spend some time digging into the architectural design, I I mean, this, the CBD specifically invites different. Um, different styles of buildings, so we want to be like, you know, Lexington kind of has this, but it goes the entire length of Main Street. We we don't necessarily want that, I know what you're saying, it's a beautiful building, this would be better than lots of alternatives, better than lots of what we have now. Um, but we want to be care, we want to go back to, I I, you you said you maybe had some stuff to show us from Assembly. Way, and I thought that was a really interesting discussion where we can think about what are the pieces of this that could be. Built around but maintain certain pieces that are consistent in character, so the the feel stays the same, but the eye isn't stuck on the. Mass produced feel.
I I I wasn't sure what you were thinking about Lexington.
Yeah, if you're like, I I feel like they have a bunch of brand new, sort of like when you're standing in downtown Lexington, it's very uniform, kind of down the whole middle of the downtown. It's not, there's not as much variation in the buildings as we have in our, our downtown, and I think we want to make, preserve that. This is beautiful for this, we just don't want this all the way to the line of Woburn.
Actually, I don't want to go into that, that, that's, that's jumping, that's jumping ahead, let's focus on. Let's focus on 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 this, you know.
Are we, are we focusing on what we need to be? Tonight, and are we covering it? And are are we, uh, are we kind of on? An informal schedule of getting the stuff done that we wanted to get done tonight? Yeah, we talked a lot about parking and a lot about setbacks. Yeah. Yeah, no, I think the 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 specific points are are are. Are a very useful discussion and it's just, um, you know, pulling it all together and a couple of people have said. That there's such an interplay between all these criteria, um, one, one impacts the other in so many ways. Um, you know, if you have to have a certain amount of parking, that impacts the area you have for building footprint, and that impacts the height because of the floor area. I mean, it's all interconnected. Um, I could, um. Taylor, I could share just a couple of images that might embellish that if that would be useful. I don't want to derail the conversation by any stretch here, but I I just, um. Um, let me uh, share my screen here for one second. Um, I'm not gonna go through this whole thing because there's a lot of stuff we've already covered. Uh, I had different graphics for like, um, you know, the parcels that that exist today. And then he- here's the Watertown area, a square area plan, which I, um, I I can just send this to you, it's it's a, it's an interesting read. And it 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 has a lot of. Uh, rationale that we're trying to use here as well, um, and. Uh, you can see here are some diagrams, I think this may be what folks are asking for. Of showing, you know, in context, what a four and a half and a five and a half look next to each other and next to some existing buildings. Um, and then the streetscape, uh, so those kinds of things. Would certainly be done, we do have some budget for that. Um, and again, they're using kind of a sub district approach here in Watertown Square where you're starting at the core and then kind of gradually. Um, moving away from that and getting to lower. Kind of uh, allowable heights and stories. Um, interestingly enough, in the very core, there is an area where first floor retail is required. Um, it's not uh, an option and you could even do that at the, at the southern end of. North Maine, um, because you have the MBTA uh, overlay that allows the multifamily as of right. Um, uh, so you could for the underlying zoning, in fact, require retail uh, on the ground floor if you want to. Um, anyway, things like that, uh, and these, this is all in these documents which are sort of fascinating, and that was the parking piece we talked about. But I wanted to just show you, um, this zoning, the Newton zoning, just to show you the kinds of things that are in the. In the text, and here's a chart and here's a little diagram and here's actually some images, um. Uh, you know, photographs that show you, well, here's a four story plus. Uh, you know, four and a half that has a setback flat roof solution, and here's a. A four and a half that has the the four stories and then the dormer upper floor, so. There are lots of ways to, you know, today to kind of have this more hybrid kind of code that has some. Of these, these graphics really built in, but still has the the dimensional charts to complement that, so I would, I I was assuming that's where we were headed. Of these, these graphics really built in, but still has the the dimensional charts to complement that, so I would, I I was assuming that's where we were headed. Um, and you can sort of.
So is that, is that something that could become a reality for us in terms of having those illustrate uh illustrations like that? I mean.
Yep, and uh it just, it makes it all the much clearer. I mean. So here you can see three other examples. This is talking about ground floor. Active uses and transparency is an important aspect of the ground floor, and then here's ideas about how how long a facade you can have. Before you have to have a break in it, so you don't just get this incredibly long continuous facade. Here's the diagram on the right, it shows the difference between how you might do a sloped. Uh, top floor versus a stepped back. Uh, anyway, so those things are are. Are becoming more and more commonplace, and it's not a form-based code per se, but it's has these form-based graphics mixed in with the uh. Uh, a sort of conventional write-up of uh criteria.
And 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 are you, I'm I'm sorry to, I'm I'm just, uh, re- remind me, are you, um. Are you helping us draft this? To the extent that that you would. Put those thoughts into into actual. Uh, words in 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 a dra- in a draft, right? How is that, what's what what's hap- how is how is that being done?
Well, that, I mean, Taylor, maybe you could speak to this better than I could, but the last go-around, basically, Taylor and, uh, well, I think. Beab and Sally were part of a working group and we we basically. Um, you know, put together the text draft and I if you remember back from some of the the final community meetings around the turn of the of the year. Um, I had already, you know, presented some graphics, I think it's actually in a different PowerPoint, um. I presented some graphics that. That we're starting to look at, uh, here, let me make that easier to see. You know, we're looking at, thi- this is sort of about site planning issues and where parking can be located and how you access parking and all, you know, these types of. Build-two lines, all these things can be done both from a site design. Perspective and from an architectural design perspective and and. I was imagining, you know, we were just starting to get there, that that these things could be integrated into the to em- to embellish the tech. Um, so that was the plan.
To 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 answer your question, everything that you're seeing here from the examples in Watertown is what we're gonna get to.
And 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 is is, do we have money for Michael to do it?
It's our, it's 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 all in the. In in scope, you know, we we need to, there's still, there's still a scope, we still need to, you know, adhere to it, but. The plan is, you know, one of the the reasons why we're continuing with Michael is because he's done a lot of this legwork already. It's just putting it into.
You know, he, I like a lot of what he's saying. And if he could do some of the drafting, I would like that too. Uh, and 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 the insertion of of some of those drawings that he's already done that are really, really, um, compelling to me.
We will be getting that.
Yeah.
Brian.
So here's just the one, one, oh, sorry, I think, go ahead, you go ahead, Brian. I didn't realize you're.
You brought up a really interesting point to me about requiring ground floor residential. Because developers, at least in East One and West One, could use the um, uh, the MBT three A. Um, overlay if they so desired. Is there any advantage to us? Assuming that we want ground floor residential, is there any advantage to also having a residential, um.
Do you mean retail?
In these zonings? Or are. Are we better off, um, getting rid of, um, having residential in here and saying, if you want to put all residential in. Um, use the MBT three A overlay, otherwise. Not giving them an opportunity to do it that way. Is there an advantage or disadvantage? You brought that up and it's an interesting point.
Well, I think that's a large part of what's behind these two different heights, uh, and other criteria. Uh, being a differential there is to is to actually incentivize that ground floor mixed-use commercial stuff. Um, because, you know, if you're having to give up. Units to to have an active, you know, uh, streetscape definition there, then. You want, you don't want to just replace that sort of one-for-one and say, okay, instead of three stories, we're going to four, but if you go to four and a half, then there starts to be a bit more of a return. And then, of course, the question is what percentage of the ground floor has to be. Retail or some kind of active use. Could you have some units like in the back of the site on the first floor? Uh, maybe they're even point accessed or there are any number of strategies someone might take, but. Um, so you may not want to completely eliminate it, but you may want to require a certain percentage of your ground floor build-out to be. Commercial retail.
Okay, that's useful, but I guess what I, sort of a follow-up. Why would someone choose to do residential only under this? When they could do residential only under MBT three A?
Um, they wouldn't.
Yeah, they would. This is still gonna be more ad- advantageous for them.
This would be, or no, the MBT three A would be more advantageous, correct? Well.
No, I mean, it would be more advantageous in the way that that would be by right, but the but this is, this. Everything from a development standpoint is more advantageous in this zone.
You're getting breaks on parking setback. It it's, you'd be interested in pursuing. Versus MBTA, you know, you. It gets your attention, you know.
To keep residential in here is what I guess, well, that was the whole, you brought up having requiring ground floor. It sounds like there's a rationale to keep residential only in this.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Have that, I have that as one of the options, but then the incentive to add some commercial space.
So this was just the last slide that I, I mean, I have I have many others, and we've got the assembly row stuff we could look at if you wanted to, but I I don't know, yeah, in the interest of time, but. Um, I can also just send you those documents, which I I have handy. There's a about a twenty-five-page design guidelines packet for. Assembly Row, but this I is, if someone asks, what's the next kind of, are we thinking about the right things? For these criteria for W one and E one? And I I just kind of took a little bit of time to really expand this out. So that you can see that in addition to these, on the left here, what it really are is sort of the primary. Topics that are generally discussed in terms of dimensional criteria. You can really get. Down into some more and more details here, and and the top part is building design that's sort of in the blue shade, and then the site design issues in the purple here. And, um, you know, you can get down, thinking about, uh, issues of uninterrupted facade length. Um, the separation between buildings, if you have more than one building on a site. Um, and ideas about how much tran- you know. Glazing transparency you want on the ground floor on a primary street versus a secondary street, and how much active use do you need to have? What's the minimum height requirements, those things? So this, there's a whole nother level of of uh detail in in these. Criteria beyond this sort of first chart that is on the left here, so I I just just to whet your appetite.
Hmm, okay, somebody asked a good question of are we getting done what we need to get done and how do we go forward? So our next meeting, I think, is a joint meeting with the select board, so we have a fairly long gap before we reconvene. We we are ruminators, so I would say we should comment. So I I personally did not get comments on this document before this meeting, but, um, now that we've sort of thought it all over or thought over. The sections that we've talked about, I think it would be a high priority to enter comments that we have from this discussion. Uh, in that shared doc so that we have it while it's fresh in our mind, and then to proactively in preparation for the next meeting. Look over the design guidelines now that you've given us a sense of where we need to be thinking about. Do we have act- are you gonna send us the presentation that you just showed us? It's a lot of information.
Yep.
You know, or or you could, you you tell me what you think would be a good, you see these meetings unfold, so what do you think? Um.
Well, so Taylor, um. I see a Z-Rack meeting on the calendar for Thursday. Is that happening? Cause the first stakeholder meeting got postponed, so I'm just. Curious what other pieces to the process there are.
Yeah, so we're still, we're still working on on getting the Z-Rack. Um, up up to speed. Um, so if if we, I I think, I think Thursday is probably too 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 early for that, but that is going to be. Be an important one to. To get. To to get in, I mean, of of course, Michael, I tried giving you as much warning as you can, but but not everyone is around and I'm having trouble. Scheduling meetings with a reasonable number of people, um. But we're working through it. I think that for the next meeting, which I. What is it, August sixth? Is that our next meeting, Carrie?
Yeah, it's in a while.
I think that we need to make, if 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 it is August sixth, I think that we need to make pretty substantial. Movement on E one and and in W one. I think that we can start looking at, and we may be able to start looking at other districts too. But. I think that we need to start getting some more concrete. Details in and start. Um, start getting things down.
My thought, I I am not too discouraged. I remember Dia wanting to map everything out early, uh, how will we get to the other districts? I think a lot of what we're gonna sort of churn through in this is gonna make the next districts much faster. I think once we kind of get a sense of like. Setback needs to be this, the parking's this, the design guidelines are gonna stay reasonably consistent. I I'm hoping. The rest of them are are responding mostly to neighbors and to lot possibility, so I'm I'm hoping this. Hoppy, we can pick up the pace a little as we go, but I I think there's merit to being a bit. More thoughtful here, but we need to get some work done between these. I don't know if we need to have. A meeting as an. Very hard to schedule summer meetings to to for what you said. Our meeting on the twenty-ninth with the select board is, it's early and it's an hour, right?
And what 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 is that meeting? What what?
On the twenty ninth. Six till seven.
Are we gonna vote?
For the select board meeting, it's Monday, the twenty-ninth. It's in person.
It's it it's on the housing production plan. It's not even on North Maine.
Right.
Okay, I mean.
It's not, it's short and we assemble, so is there a way to get another room in Town Hall and move to a different room and have an another discussion? Is what I'm wondering. Even if it's relatively.
I mean. Yes, that is a possibility, so you.
Or two-hour meeting instead of a one-hour meeting. So we can move a little bit of.
I agree, since we're already gonna be at Town Hall, I assume it's in person, um, we might as well, um. Not wait, uh, hot trip, as we say in our house.
And we could do that, I I mean, you know, Michael, you're in Montana, I don't know where you'll be on the twenty, like, that could be a board discussion where we pour over some of what you've given us to do. Or you're, I mean, you're always welcome, but, um, what do you think, Taylor?
As long as it works for you all, I mean, I think I think that's that's fine. I mean, what. I need to have the whole schedule in front of me before I can really make up my makeup, uh, my mind about what. What the best thing to do is.
Okay, so my, I would say, so let's let's assume an extra hour at Town Hall on the twenty-ninth ends up being feasible for everyone. We can find a room and all of that. I would say our goal for that would be to tick through some of what. Some of what we're getting a cursory look at and and make sure that we've named some priorities. How do we measure the roof? What roofs do we like? What roofs do we not like? Uh, start to define some of the architectural elements in the design guidelines, because I think that will be a really meaty part of this process. Um, but I'm 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 open to spending time on something else that seems like a higher priority, but I think. I think we're gonna take the most time getting that right, and the sooner we can start that discussion, the better off we'll be.
And and for for the select board meeting, what are they gonna be needing from us? I mean, what what's the purpose of of our meeting with them?
So it's an information session, so both the planning board and the select board are are. Well, the select board is the ultimate risk, they're ultimately responsible for the housing production plan, but the planning board plays a big role in the housing production plan, so it's going to be. Our consultants, M A P C, uh, presenting the. You know, the the early draft of what the housing production plan is, so that you can understand what it is, so that you can ultimately vote on it. I mean, you are gonna have to vote on it. So, um, getting the information on what the housing production plan is 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 important.
Okay, so straw poll, can you, you, Brian, it sounds like you can stay an extra hour if possible on the twenty-ninth. John, can you stay an extra hour on the twenty-ninth if possible?
Yes.
And Nick?
I'll have to see, I'll lecture.
Okay.
I'll.
Okay, so we'll we'll look into it, we'll email and see if that's something that we can even.
Uh, Carrie, can I just say, it sounds like the like this select board meeting is is more housing production plan, so that it's probably not. Me in attendance, but I would actually be more than happy to join you guys, um, if you could, if you could patch me in by Zoom.
Yeah.
Uh, to that after discussion. Um, and then I'm 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 coming back to the East Coast, um, you know, sort of the second week of August, so I'll, um, I'll be there soon.
Okay, okay, so let let's pencil that in. I I. Let me re- let's review the rules on whether we can do, can we do hybrid meetings or is that not? I think we. I know for.
We still can.
Okay, so hybridized participation where some members can be, some can be in person?
According to the Attorney General, I believe we still can do it for now. They have not.
The tech for that in Town Hall, that was a whole, I remember that was a whole thing.
That's a different question.
Okay, so TBD, so we'll we'll send out, we'll send some more. Eh, what else do we want to accomplish this evening? And we sort of like.
I feel like we covered, I mean, I I feel very, like we covered a lot on this. Um, because it just takes time to go over these and sort of make sense out of them, um, and I'll be sitting around a table, so it may feel like it's going slowly. But I understand this much better than I did. An hour and a half ago, so.
Okay. Knowing that there might be. Okay, anything, Michael, that you think you would like us to have our heads around before we, before we make notes or before we start digging into other. Design guideline points. I know it's a huge.
Well, I mean, I I definitely see the merit in getting through this pair of sub-districts, you know, uh, and sort of digesting your your own comments. And 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 kind of revising that draft, but I, in in looking at the overall schedule. And the fact that a draft is due at the beginning of September. I I have to say, it would be great if you guys could tackle the other sub-districts, at least to the level of what we were starting with tonight as well. But maybe that's too much to bite off, I don't know, um. I don't know how I feel about that, Taylor, but.
Can we look at that quickly or?
I get nervous when I look at the beginning of September deadline, so.
Carrie and I have our meeting tomorrow morning. How about you give us the time to go over? We'll we'll put a calendar in front of us, we'll go over, write down the dates that we want to tackle everything. I mean, I I share. I mean, because, well, Michael, you're gonna be doing doing a lot of writing, but I'm gonna be doing a lot of writing too. I mean, I I share the, uh. The time crunch concerns. I think that, yeah, let let. Just let me ca- me and Carrie sit down tomorrow morning and and we can hash it out and we can have a better, we can report back to you all tomorrow, uh, with with some more detail.
In the meantime, I'll send those slides that I had tonight, and I'll also send the Watertown. Newton and Assembly Row, uh, documents, so you guys can.
Right.
Those, so.
I feel comfortable with Carrie and and Taylor looking at some of the stuff and some of the stuff that we didn't cover today, um. And. To the extent that that you've processed some of it, um, it's, it would be helpful to, to me, to get you, to get your thoughts once you've done that.
And we do have the, we do have the the doc that we can make comments on, so if there's something that's sort of like, I want to make sure this was heard. Even I I think it's, I think it's important that we all get on there and start getting comfortable with commenting, so even if you comment and say, agree. I think it's good for us to just sort of, like, we have to get engaged with with making comments and moving the, moving the draft forward, so.
This is the uh, the North Maine zoning amendment F T M twenty-four draft that.
That, that's correct, yeah.
Uh.
So same as we did winding down to three A, um, just get on there and yes, no setbacks, you know. Comment thoughts. We can't interact, don't respond to each other's comments, but.
Right.
Everyone should be represented on the on the doc and I'm I'm.
And this, and and this is the document that will ultimately have the the drawings that I like so much?
Yes.
Which I, which I don't know that I have the capability to do that. I'm I'm gonna leave that up to, uh, to Michael.
I can start to, I, I mean, I've started to do that last, uh. You know, December is starting to identify which things I think would be most useful to, uh. You know, graphically show, um.
I mean, just to have an, it just. I mean, just to have an, it, just, just for sake of illustration sake. Um, it would be a nice document. To kind of, people look at it and they say that, you know, it puts, it puts thoughts into their head in terms of what they might want to do here.
Yeah, that's great. I like the idea of visual guides. Okay, anything else we should, we should sort of materially accomplish this evening? Okay, so we'll get back to you on the um. Possibility of another meeting on the twenty-ninth. We will get comments into the doc and. I think that's it for tonight. I would take a.
For comments just for the East One, West One doc or for the, the larger doc?
I, I mean, to the point of the, to the point of the um, time crunch, if you are really chomping at the bit to make sure, if something sort of clicked for you, like, oh, we must make sure we do or do not do this adjacent to a residential district. You know, it's not, we can, we can edit later. It's.
I mean, I, I feel, I feel comfortable with a lot of the. You know, the setbacks that we've established. The parking we've established. I mean, it feels like we've done a lot of it. So we, we, you know, we had that marathon section and I guess with the last board.
Yeah, design guidelines and uses I think are going to need to be parsed a little differently. And the design guidelines we need to dive into, and then I think those could be consistent. For, for all the way up to Woburn, but um. The uses, I think we need to be. A little more, a little more surgical with what we.
Oh, I see, sure.
District in terms of pedestrian um, activity and um. I will die on the hill of front setbacks as we move up the.
Sounds good.
So there, there will be some shit. That's what I mean though. There's not going to be, we're not going to sort of have. A fresh discussion for each district. It's going to be sort of, it shouldn't be quite that tall adjacent to residential, a little more space than should be, you know, whatever, so. Um, we're, we're doing the, we're doing the um, the awkward work of getting a template for our discussions now, and I think it'll get a little faster as we go.
Great.
Okay, anything else? I would take a motion to adjourn then.
Still moved.
Moved. Second.
Okay, Nick moved, Brian seconded, and roll call, Brian?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Thank you, Michael, for being here. Thank you, Cheryl, for taking our notes. Thank you, John Serbeer. And Taylor and WinCam always for, for bringing us to the people and we'll see you on the twenty-ninth.